It'll go all the way off and then it'll come back. It'll cut back off and then it'll...
All right, everybody ready? Good to go.
All right.
Call to order the April 4th City Council meeting. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Jackie, can you please call the roll?
Yes. Mayor Evans?
Here.
Vice Mayor Russell?
Here.
Mr. Mitchell?
Here.
Mr. Parrish?
Here.
Ms. Cooper?
Here.
Mr. Redmond?
Present.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Here.
And that takes us to proceedings. Do I have a motion to approve the City Council meeting proceedings from March 21st?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And that takes us to financial statements. Do I have a motion to adopt the February 2023 financial report?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
And that takes us to financial statements. Do I have a motion to adopt the February 2023 financial report?
So moved.
Second. Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
And correspondence? We have correspondence?
From the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. It is for 217 Rivers Edge Drive Incorporated. They are looking to change, I guess they're changing ownership, and they need to revise their liquor permit to update with the new names of the owners.
Do we need a hearing?
Do we do nothing?
Okay, move to do nothing then, okay?
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
All right, that takes us to our public comments section. Anyone from the public like to make a comment? Seeing none, we'll go on to standing committee reports. Community development, Mr. Redmond.
Thank you, Mayor. The Community Development Committee met yesterday, March 3rd, or sorry, it says March 3rd, or April 3rd, 2023. I called the meeting order at 4:00 PM. Present were myself, Mr. Mitchell, and Ms. Cooper was excused by us. Staff, City Manager Michael Doss was there, Finance Director Pat Witherland, and Executive Assistant Jackie Bane. We had no visitors. I will be again by approving the proceedings from the March 1st, 2023 Community Development Committee meeting. Our first order of business is discussion of the Park and Recreation Commission duties and responsibilities. Mr. Doss and the committee discussed in length their revisions that they would like to make to the draft of the ordinance for rules and procedures for the City of Milford Park and Recreation Commission. Discussion included the composition and duties of the commission, included recommendations that Ms. Cooper made and had previously suggested. The committee agreed to have the revisions made and discussed at the next Community Development Committee meeting that will be held before the next City Council meeting on April 18th. After that, we discussed Five Points Landing Park painting concrete. Mr. Doss reviewed and made the committee aware of information from DER regarding Five Points Landing Park concrete to add integral coloring to portions of the east side layout plan as indicated on an attached sketch. The total integral coloring change order total is $5,630.37. DER bid had included a $50,000 contingency. The committee agreed to the change order. The committee was notified that Mr. Doss was implementing the change. There being no further business, the meeting adjourned at 4:26 with a motion from myself and seconded by Mr. Mitchell.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to Administrative Services, Mr. Parrish.
Thank you, Mayor. The Administrative Services Committee met yesterday, April 3rd, and I called the meeting to order at 4:30 PM. Present were myself, Ms. Chamberlain, and Mayor Evans, staff included City Manager Michael Doss, Finance Director Pat Witherland, and Executive Assistant Jackie Bane. We had no visitors at our meeting. Our first proceeding was approval of the March 16th, 2023 Administrative Services Committee minutes, all approved. We then moved on to a discussion about code enforcement consolidation and compensation. Mr. Doss discussed how we have been trying to hire a part-time code enforcement person. Mr. Doss has asked Christine Seltzer, the Planning, Zoning, and Community Development Coordinator, to take on the responsibility with additional compensation. She informed Mr. Doss that she was interested in taking on this added responsibility. Mr. Doss asked the committee to consider, the Planning and Community Development Coordinator absorbed the code enforcement position and all of the responsibility.
Increase compensation $12,000.
Second.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
The committee then moved on to a discussion about DORA expansion. Mr. Doss followed up with the committee on information to expand the DORA boundaries to include COVALT station. We've also noticed that we need to update the list of businesses to be included on the new DORA legislation. This will establish the process for an ordinance to increase the boundaries of the DORA and include new businesses that are not established in the current DORA, or not included in the current DORA. The committee agreed to... We then moved on to a discussion about the Claremont County Health District 2024 contract. Mr. Doss discussed that as a municipality in the state of Ohio, we participate in the county's health department to provide services for us. In particular, they do many restaurant inspections as well as other general services for the Milford community. This annual contract last year was $29,342.29. This year's contract is $29,774.08. The committee agreed to recommend that the law director draft an ordinance to enter into an agreement for general health services with the Claremont County Health District in the amount of $29,774.08.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
There being no further business for the committee, the meeting was adjourned at 4:59 PM with a motion from Ms. Chamberlain, seconded by Ms. Evans, all said yes.
All right, thank you very much. That takes us to City Manager Report, Mr. Doss.
So a few updates on projects, upcoming projects, and some projects that we have going on right now. We're turning the corner. It's April, so we're getting into our project season. We're going to see a lot of paving projects, a lot of infrastructure projects, infrastructure heavy, for duration of the spring and summer and a little bit into fall. But as everyone knows, the Duke Energy Milling and Resurfacing, we did meet Ed Hackmeister and I with Duke Energy to go over the milling and resurfacing of US 50 Main Street. That project is anticipated to commence in late April and be completed by mid-May. They are going to mill down three inches and overlay three inches. The streets include State Route 28, Main Street, US 50 Lila Avenue, Locust Street, Sycamore Street, a section of High Street, Lewis Avenue, and Kirgan Lane. Speaking of paving, the city is participating in Claremont County Engineers 2023 paving program. Ed Hackmeister attended a pre-con meeting, a pre-construction meeting with the paving contractor last week in Batavia. Milford paving projects are scheduled for late summer around August. They're actually going to start in the southern part of Claremont County and work their way up. There are several paving projects going on in southern Claremont County, so we're anticipating around the summer, around August. Those streets include Winnebago Drive, Cleveland Avenue, Edgecombe Drive, and Beach Street. Just to let the public know and counsel, all of those streets were assessed and scored using our pavement management study that we completed a couple of years ago. Five Points Landing Park project progress update. DER continues construction of the park with still an estimated completion date in late September. The contractor will pour the first section of sidewalks in common areas over the next couple of weeks, so you'll see a lot of concrete pouring. Foundations for the restroom facilities have been poured and installed. Unseasonably warm weather has moved this project ahead of schedule, even with the rain we've had the last couple of weeks, we're still ahead of schedule, so that's good. There are no standing committee meeting scheduled at this time. Some reminders, April 5th tomorrow is a Planning Commission meeting at 6:00. This Saturday, April 8th is our Easter Extravaganza, our Easter egg hunt. That'll be held at Riverside Park starting at 10:00 AM. Everyone is welcome. The next regularly scheduled council meeting is April 18th at 7:00. And I do want to remind the public, we have a lot of things going on on Saturday, April the 22nd. We will have our Arbor Day Tree Giveaway, so if anyone is interested in that, they can log on to our website, city website, or our Facebook page and get information if they want to participate in the tree giveaway. We'll also have our spring litter clip-up, oh goodness, spring litter cleanup, wow. That's Saturday, April 22nd as well, and then also Community Shred Day at, beginning at 10:00 AM here at City Hall.
Sorry, I didn't catch that. Could you say that one more time?
No.
Thank you very much.
Say that three times.
That's my face right now.
All right, that takes us to the Police Department, Chief Mills.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Council. So March was a busy month. In terms of training, all sworn members were re-qualified on the department's issued firearms and our use of force policies. All personnel were trained on the Handle With Care program. All sworn members received training on Ohio's new distracted driving law and Marcy's Law for crime victims. Officers Chastain and Liming attended a resiliency leadership training. Officer Clark attended a responders in faith conference, and Officer Mel attended House of Worship security training. Some notable occurrences, officers logged 1,226 call records, took 328 offense reports, responded to 17 auto accidents, issued 181 traffic citations, and 109 warnings. Our detectives were assigned 13 new cases, investigating a total of 25, closing 12, and making four arrests. A breakdown by squad of some notable occurrences. Squad 1 investigated a suicide at the Holiday Inn located on Old Bank Road. They also investigated a report of three juveniles who were reportedly trying to force entry into the concession stand at the Riverside Ballpark. Those juveniles were located and transported to the station where they were picked up by their parents. The officers noted there was no damage to the building or the door. Officer Clark and Officer Liming assisted a subject having a mental or possibly drug-induced psychotic breakdown on 275. On squad 2, officers responded to Riverside Park for a non-breather where an officer performed CPR and arrived and took over. That squad also took the initial report involving an unknown female committing theft offenses at two downtown retail stores. Detective Fannin subsequently identified and charged that suspect. Squad 2 also assisted the Valley View Preserve by serving a trespass notice on a homeless individual who had set up camp on their property. On squad 3, they assisted the Milford Community Fire Department with a structure fire located at the boarding house on Kenny Court. They handled a death investigation on Choctaw Lane and arrested a subject wanted on a felony warrant out of Warren County. And on squad 4, they responded to Cinemark for an intoxicated female who had control of two children. After consulting with the prosecutor, she was charged with endangering children and disorderly conduct. Officers on squad 4 also responded to an apartment building in Happy Hollow for an active domestic, where both subjects were charged with domestic violence, and the child and the residence was placed in the care of his biological father. In lighter news, I attended the, excuse me, I was interviewed rather, by Kalia, that's the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies as part of the Goshen Township's Police Accreditation On-Site. We did have one low-level response to resistance reported during the month that was reviewed by command staff. It's the time of year when all personnel are receiving their performance evaluations, and Sergeant West has released our new wellness app, which I think I mentioned at our last meeting. It's been a very well-received addition to our health and wellness program. In community relations, we have begun planning for National Night Out. Officer Brown participated in the Patterson Elementary Walk-a-Thon celebration. I was interviewed at Patterson Elementary during their onsite for an award from the Ohio Association of Elementary School Administrators Hall of Fame. We're hoping to hear news this month on, rather, they got the Hall of Fame award. Sergeant Kibbe received a nice thank you card from a widow whom he had delivered a death notification. We were able to reunite a lost dog within an hour of posting it on Facebook. Officer Liming provided food and clothing to a homeless subject whose clothes had become saturated by rain. Squad 2 assisted an elderly citizen at 506 Garfield with carrying heavy pit food products inside their residence. We do a lot of outreach, that was a first for me, that was really neat that they, Sergeant included that in his monthly report. Squad 4 provided shelter at the station lobby as well as food for a stranded female who was waiting on the morning metro bus. In some numbers throughout the month, patrol officers conducted 157 vacation house checks, 766 extra patrols, 27 school visits, one senior visit, and issued 38 cop watch forms. And speaking of vacation house checks, I'd like to read a nice email I received today from former Mayor Lou Bishop titled "Big Thank You." He says, "Hello, Chief Mills. Please pass my sincere thanks to all the officers who checked on my property for three months while I was on winter break. I watched them on my security camera and they faithfully looked after us every day. It really means a lot to have a first-rate police force. Thanks for your fine leadership, Lou Bishop." And I wrote him back, thanked him, and asked for permission to read that at tonight's meeting. Of course, he agreed. And that concludes my report. Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to Fire and E-Mess, District Chief Nickel.
Good evening.
Well?
I'd like to say we're pleased to announce the rolling out of our smoke CO detector installation program. These detectors are combination detector, and they are going to be free to the City of Milford residents, and they're provided under the FEMA grant that we received. So with that being said, this week we started handing out door hangers. We're concentrating on Indian Knolls and Clare Thomas Subdivision now, and again, these door hangers will explain the program and provide fire department contact information. We hope to start installing these in late April, early May, and then also we'll be covering other neighborhoods later this year. Because the way this thing works is it's a two-year period, so like half the detectors are available now, and then half will be, you know, available for next year, so we have to, you know, deal with what we have in that. So we're looking very forward to doing that, and we hope it's a very successful program. Last week, we did our first 2023 live burn with all of our mutual aid departments, and in three days, we had probably 120 firefighters come through the training. So, you know, three great days of live burns and, you know, jointly working together, which, again, it pays huge dividends whenever we respond with Miami, Darien Hill Terrace Park, et cetera, so it works out good. That's all I have.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, that takes us to council comments. Anybody on council like to make a comment?
I want to make a plug for our tree giveaway. I went down today to go look at the trees, and this, again, this is open for all the residents in the city. You do have to fill out an entry form, and those entries need to be submitted by April 14th, so the deadline is definitely coming up, and we will be drawing for those on April 22nd around noon time, and you do have to be present to pick up your tree. But we have beautiful black gums, oak trees, some hornbeam trees, and these aren't like little whips, they're like 10 and 15 gallon trees with like, a good like six, five to six foot tall tree, so.
Everybody needs to get their entry in.
Get your entry in, yes.
All right, anybody else?
I just wanted to follow up on the community relations from our Police Department. They've been very diligent. Evidently, there's been, it's almost like the NDA 500 going through South Milford lately, and so the officers have been staked out in certain areas, trying to slow them down a little bit. And also, I want to thank again Officer Brown for rescuing me from my locked car.
Bummer.
My key was inside the car. I was not.
That's a great service they provide. Thank you. Anybody else? All right, that takes us to new businesses.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number 23-206, an ordinance for the Planning and Community Development Coordinator position to absorb the responsibilities of the zoning code enforcement position and increase compensation $12,000 effective retroactively to April 3, 2023. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. Previously by ordinance number 08-680, the Council of the City of Milford established the position title of zoning code enforcement as a part-time unclassified position for the Planning Department. City Council hereby now wants the Planning and Community Director to absorb the responsibilities of the zoning code enforcement position with a $12,000 additional annual compensation increase retroactive to and effective April 3, 2023. The position description was attached to ordinance number 08-680 and is fully incorporated herein pursuant to and in accordance with Section 12.03 of the Milford City Charter, Section 2. Under and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage.
Move to suspend the rules and reby title only.
Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Redmond?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-206, an ordinance for the Planning and Community Development Coordinator position to absorb the responsibilities... position to absorb the responsibilities of the zoning code enforcement position and increase compensation $12,000 effective retroactively to April 3, 2023.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-207, an ordinance authorizing the City of Milford to execute a contract with the Claremont County Health District Advisory Council for the provision of public health services for 2024. Now therefore be ordained by the Council of the Municipality of Milford, Ohio, Section 1. The Council of the City of Milford, Ohio pursuant to Section 3709.08 of the Ohio Revise Code and the Charter of the City of Milford hereby authorizes the City Manager to enter into and execute a contract with the Claremont County District Advisory Council whereby the City of Milford shall pay to the Claremont County General Health District the sum of $29,774.08 for one year of public health services beginning January 1, 2024, said sum to be payable semi-annually in May and November. The public health services to be provided pursuant to said contract are those that are required by the Ohio Revise Code and the Ohio Sanitary Code and all other authorized services similar to those which Claremont County General Health District provides for its district. The terms and conditions of said contract shall be and are hereby incorporated by reference pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 12.03 of the Milford City Charter. Section 2 pursuant to and in accordance with Sections 12.05 and 12.07 of the Milford City Charter, this ordinance shall become effective immediately upon its passage by City Council.
Move to suspend the rules and read by title only.
Second.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Ordinance number 23-207, an ordinance authorizing the City of Milford to execute a contract with the Claremont County Health District Advisory Council for the provision of public health services for 2024.
Motion to adopt.
Second.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Thank you, Mayor.
All right, thank you. I don't think we have any old business, so do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Evans?
Yes.
Ms. Russell?
Yes.
Mr. Mitchell?
Yes.
Mr. Parrish?
Yes.
Ms. Cooper?
Yes.
Mr. Redman?
Yes.
Ms. Chamberlain?
Yes.
All right, thank you, everyone.